Okay, it's seven o'clock here. I'm going to call to this meeting of the City and Nashua Planning Board for the 2nd of November 2023. I guess we'll be lended. Do you want to do the roll call?
Sure.
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, Alderman Patricia Clay, Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Alderman Derek Tebow. So we do have a quorum.
Okay, so we're moving forward with the agenda here. First up is approval of the minutes from the October 19th, 2023 City Nashua Planning Board meeting. Has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at these minutes? I want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 19th, 2023 Nashua City Planning Board meeting as written.
All right, so we have that motion to accept the October 19th, 2023 minutes as written. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? No, that motion passes, so 5-0. Communications?
No additional communications, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any reports of committees or liaisons? I don't think we have anybody here from those. Okay, I will go ahead and move on. I'm going to read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So the procedure of the meeting and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, a public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for any testimony from the audience. First ask if anybody's wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan. This would be a time to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and express any concerns or ask any questions you have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant then will be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end. The board will resume a public meeting, at which time will deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand, not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'll thank everyone for their interest and their attention, and if you do have a cell phone, if you can just put it on vibrate or mute or something at this time. Okay, so moving forward. A few cases on the agenda here have been tabled to the 7th of December. These are cases A23-066. These are old business subdivision plans, excuse me, A23-0067, A23-0068, and old business site plan A23-0069. These are all tabled to December 7th, 2023. First up, new business. There's a couple of related cases here. New business subdivision plan, case A23-0176, law realty company owner, law family companies applicant, proposed lot line relocation consolidation subdivision and boundary plan. These are located at 338, 340, 350, and 352 Amherst Street, and 16, 17, 18, and 30 Airport Road, in combination with A23-0175, same owner, same applicant, but a one-story, 15,100 square foot retail building and site improvements located at 350 Amherst Street. So, anybody, Mr. Hirsch, did you?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, so we have a one recusal, Mr. Hirsch, from the, from these two applications. Unfortunately, this leaves us with four, which is below our quorum. So apologize for the late notice of that to the applicant. The next meeting is?
November 16th.
November 16th, so that would be the earliest we have an opportunity to hear that, these two cases, based on that. So, and I'm sure planning will keep you up to date on the quorum availability for that. Any questions?
If I may, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you could, Jim Petropolis.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if you'd be so kind to lean on the astute Mr. Barley to look into the bylaws, to see if you have a quorum to start the meeting, if that's what's acceptable versus a particular case.
Yeah, we did discuss this just in advance of the meeting here. I mean, I, my view is that, you know, if at any time you go below a quorum, that that would be insufficient, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to hear a particular case. So, you know, if circumstances were otherwise, where Mr. Hirsch just had to leave the meeting early, deprived of the quorum, I don't, I don't think we can continue business with less than a quorum, even if we start the meeting with a quorum.
Okay.
And that would work, you know, it would be no different than if he had a corporate board of directors. Once he was a quorum, he can't continue taking, you know, acting, taking business, so.
Last time I listened to Andy.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I apologize. We do our best to, to get everybody here.
It would be the case and the site plan case, Mr. Chair.
And we obviously would take those first up.
We will, we will make sure we have a quorum.
Yeah. And it was the 16th of November?
November 16th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, okay. All right, so moving on to new business subdivision plan. The next item on the agenda is case number A23-0174. This is Carmen V. Capone and David R. DePloie owners, proposed two-lot subdivision properties located at 75 Manchester Street. So for the board, is everybody okay sitting on this one? Yeah, okay. So we do have a quorum for this one. I will first ask of the board, does anybody have a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over a new business subdivision plan, case A23-0174, property located at 75 Manchester Street.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to take jurisdiction of case number A23-0174. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on the jurisdiction by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, you can go ahead and present.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here tonight representing the applicant, 75 Manchester Street LLC. Members of the applicant team are here with us tonight, including attorney Andy Proman, Prunyan Proman, the project attorney. Here seeking subdivision approval for a one lot into two subdivision at 75 Manchester Street. I'd just like to offer a very brief presentation, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board or the public. So as shown up on the screen, 75 Manchester Street, known as MAP 65, Lot 106. It's a little over an acre site located in the RA zone. We abut Greeley Park directly to our north, to the west, Manchester Street, and single-family residences across Manchester Street. And then to the south and to the east, you can see there's single-family residences off of Mananok Street to the south and Blue Jay Hill Road to the east. The site currently contains three dwellings, an existing barn, as well as an existing detached garage. All the buildings are located in very close proximity to Manchester Street and are in generally states of disrepair as they exist today. There are two existing curb cuts for the property. There's a main driveway along the southerly frontage, and there's a very short driveway right along the northerly frontage that's attached to the detached garage up in that corner of the site. So two existing curb cuts. The remainder of the lot is currently wooded or lawn area. We've got fairly moderate topography, generally sloping either in a westerly direction towards Manchester Street or southerly towards the backs of the homes on Mananok Street. This whole area of the city is combined sanitary sewer system. No wetlands presently on site. Existing site serviced by public sewer water by Pennachuck, overhead electric, and telecommunications utilities. Gas does not service the property currently, but is available within Manchester Street. So we're here tonight seeking a subdivision, like I said, subdivide the existing lot into two, a single-family residential lots to be known as new lot 106 and new lot 243. So our goal in setting up the subdivision was really to provide one fully conforming RA zone lot along the site's frontage, as well as one oversized lot that conforms with the RA zone dimensional requirements with the notable exception of the minimum lot width. We did receive a variance for, for that back in August of this year. So new lot 106 will contain 9,758 square feet. That will maintain the current address of 75 Manchester Street. The oversized lot in the back will contain 48,974 square feet and have a new address of 73 Manchester Street. As part of the projects, all the existing buildings will be demolished. You can see in an effort to maximize safety and available site distance, we're proposing a singular shared driveway that will be utilized by both lots and located along the southerly portion of the site's frontage on Manchester Street. The existing northerly curb cut that I talked about that's associated with that detached garage, that will be eliminated and will construct new curbing and sidewalk in that location. The proposed homes, as shown on the plan, for the lot up front along Manchester Street is about a 1,200 square foot footprint with a two-foot, two-car garage, which is keeping with the abutting residences in the area. The proposed home on the oversized lot, Lot 243, is slightly larger, about a 24,000 square foot footprint with a two-car garage, which is reflective of the fact that because it's an oversized lot, it can support a slightly larger home. Of course, the new houses will be serviced by public sewer water, gas, and underground electric and telecommunications utilities. Couple key elements of the application, so in terms of previous proposals, in 2017, the zoning board denied multiple variances for a development plan prepared by another firm for this property. That included a new private street and seven single-family detached homes on a single lot in a condominium form of ownership. Minutes from that hearing reflected the zoning board, in butter concerns at that time were about the higher density of development as it relates to traffic, along with the character of the neighborhood as single-family homes on single-family lots. Obviously, that testimony was taken into account in preparing and submitting this application before you tonight. Second element I just want to touch on is, is traffic. So this site is located, for all of you that are very familiar with this area of the city, this is a challenging section of Manchester Street. Our property is located on the inside of what's a fairly sharp curve. So the existing condition, there is limited site distance available for vehicles traveling along this section of Manchester Street, based on not only the geometry of the road, but also the fact that existing structures and vegetation are located, you know, right up along the street. Specifically, this subject property, we've got multiple structures, as well as retaining wall and topography, that really block existing sightlines. The site is also located just south of Manchester Street, Charlotte Ave intersection, which contains a key pedestrian crosswalk in the area leading to Charlotte Ave School. Charlotte Ave is about a third of the mile down Charlotte Ave in that location. Knowing the challenges of this intersection, it's my understanding the city installed an additional warning sign at Mananok Street to give motorists an advanced warning of that crosswalk as they're coming around the corner. So based on this challenge, the project team obtained the services of Van Ness and Associates to prepare a site distance analysis for traffic leaving the site and traveling along this section of Manchester Street. Careful consideration was made in the location of the proposed house, shared driveway, and topography, to ensure that the front of the site really is cleared out and we have clear line of sights, in order to maximize available site distance in both directions. So as a result, Van Ness's analysis concludes that the proposed project will improve available site distance, not only for vehicles accessing the property, but also for vehicles traveling along this section of Manchester Street, again, because we are clearing out all those existing impediments along our frontage. Additionally, the applicant is committed to seeking sightline easements from the abutting property to the south, that's 71 Manchester Street, as well as the City of Nashua for a very small corner of the adjacent Greeley Park property, essentially the little sliver up by Manchester Street. Regardless of whether the easements are obtained, we certainly believe that the proposed project will result in a significant improvement with regards to site distance compared to the existing condition, as I mentioned, not only for vehicles accessing the site, but also for vehicles traveling along this corridor. We did have a chance to meet our team with city engineer and Wayne Husband, city traffic engineer. I think, in speaking for them, in terms of the results of the meetings, I think it was recognized, certainly the challenges of this section of road. You know, we, we certainly agree that the proposed project is, is a low-volume traffic generator, and recognize that the city, that the project would improve the existing condition at the site in the intersection. We did submit the traffic analysis as part of this application, as well as the previous zoning application. We did not receive any follow-up comments or concerns from engineering. Mr. Chair, we do have one waiver here tonight. It's the standard waiver for existing conditions planned survey within 1,000 feet of the site. I think there's a slight discrepancy between the section I referenced in my letter dated October 16th, based on what the staff report. Obviously, I'll defer to staff in terms of what regulation is appropriate there, but it's both for the existing conditions planned for survey within properties in 1,000 feet of the site. In summary, we believe this application is complete, conforms with the subdivision plan regulations. Conditions outlined in the staff report are acceptable. Regarding conditions six and seven, we did receive engineering and fire comments after resubmitting plans. Upon review of those, I don't have any issue with addressing those moving forward, if the board is willing to add those as a condition of approval. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Hudson?
Sorry, maybe I missed it, but the, there was a fire department calling to extend the turnaround. That's going to be done.
Yes, so I, I talked with Mr. D'Varney, and the intent of his comment was, I guess, a little different than typically. Typically, he requires a 40-foot deep turnaround, and based on my conversation, he was looking for 40 feet total from the right side of the driveway to the left side. I think it's 31 feet now, so it'd be about nine feet. I don't think he's anticipating asking us to spin a ladder truck through there, but for ambulances and other smaller size, so we're certainly okay with that.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant?
Okay. Thanks.
Hearing done. I'll open up to the audience. Does anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question on the plan? I don't know if we have anybody online.
I do not see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay. All right, anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Hearing done. I will give the board one more opportunity to ask any follow-up questions of the applicant. Mr. Ballinger or staff?
Mr. Chair, just a question for staff perhaps. In the staff report, I guess just based on the age of the property and, and the purpose for, for which it was first built, the home for a veteran of the War of 1812, were there any other historic considerations for, for this property specifically?
Actually, what we were able to do is the owner was gracious enough for us to walk through the property, take a look at, you know, any, taking pictures. And one of the things that's required of the building department is to take pictures of all the outsides of the building and any unique features within. And this particular building is in pretty bad shape, and it's been altered quite a bit over the years. So, but everything else was documented with pictures, as best we could do.
Okay. So there was, there was no special considerations? They didn't have to go to historic commission or?
No, unless, unless the property is potentially eligible for the national register, this had been altered to the point where that wouldn't even probably qualify, unfortunately.
Okay.
Usually, famous person, type of architecture, age of the building, you know, the different things. But in this case, unfortunately, it was, you know, neglected for, I, I think well over 20, 30 years, I believe, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions by the board? All right, we'll go ahead and close the hearing, move to the meeting. So we've got a two-lot subdivision in front of us. Seems like pretty straightforward. With respect to the waiver, the question of the applicant on the section 190, we have 28110 in our report. Is that the right?
Well, there's one for subdivision and there's one for site plan. And the one for subdivision has 1,000 feet, and I can clarify that number.
282B9?
Yeah, that's what I have, 282B9.
282B9?
Yeah, that's actually what's in, 190, 282B9.
Oh, at the top. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, 190, 28110. So it's, yeah, the, the regular planning board, 190, 281B9 is the general one.
Yeah.
And then the waiver itself would be 190. Do you have that?
You can use the 190, 281.
81. Yeah, why don't we?
Just use 281.
Yeah, that works. I'm just so used to flipping back and.
Yeah, that's fine. I just don't want to add on any things that don't need to be added on, I guess. All right, so any other discussion points while we're in the meeting here for the board? Yeah? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, case A23-0174, property located at 75 Manchester Street, finding that it does meet the requirements of subdivision plan, NRO, section 190-282B9, subject to 10 conditions. The first of which is a waiver request of section 190-28110 shall read, is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, stipulations 2 through 10 as written in the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ballinger. Was one, based on staff, would you mind amending that first waiver to just 190-281, just to take the 10 off? I think that's what was being recommended, right?
Yeah.
Oh, certainly. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that'll make it general.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may amend my recommendation, stipulation number one, with respect to a waiver request regarding existing physical features, section, shall read section 190-281, and shall continue to state is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Okay, thanks. So we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second for that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Thank you. So next up, we have new business site plan. This is case number A23-0172, Dana George's LLC owner. This is a proposed amendment to, in our 2251, for changes to previously approved Groton Estates condo property located at 67 Groton Road. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this motion, or excuse me, this application, and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that, as to case A23-0172, that it is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley to take jurisdiction of A23-0172. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, we have jurisdiction. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Paul Chisholm. I'm an engineer at Keach-Norsham Associates, where the engineers and surveyors are record for the project. I, I know a couple of you have seen this plan since it was originally approved in 2019 for some changes over the years. Just to give you a little update of where the project is in general, Osprey Lane, which is the new road, private road with the four single-family houses built off of it, three of those have been built completely sold, people are living in them. The fourth is almost to the finish line there, so that's well underway. As the attention is now turned more to the barn units, which again were the three units in the barn itself, and then a fourth attached unit in what's the existing White House out there, the wheels started turning a little bit about how to best go about this. As we were working with the architect, it was really discovered that there's a couple things that, although could be worked around, that they would definitely present challenges in terms of making this building, you know, code compliant in terms of energy and some other building-related things, particularly with the foundation. Although there's options for basically lifting the structure up, building a new foundation, putting it back down, Dana has experience with that, and that's not preferable, in his opinion. Basically, anytime you move a building like that, there's opportunity for things to shift and move, and with an old structure like this, he just doesn't see that as the best option. So the plan right now is to basically take it down, rebuild it from a foundation, get everything up to current codes and everything like that, and build it back up so it looks exactly the same as it does now. What that means is the same building height, the same roof pitches. The exterior of the building today is basically modern building materials in terms of the siding and the roofing and the windows and things like that. On the interior, it's obviously a little bit older. A lot of those wood beams and things like that would be able to be selectively demoed, used basically in the new construction for exposed beams to kind of give the interior that same look and feel that I think they were going for in terms of the interior architecture. So this is not the least expensive option by any means. It's something that I think, you know, in Dana's opinion, is going to be a little bit more marketable, and it's a little bit more, kind of what buyers, I think, are typically used to seeing out there. The, again, overall, the barn's going to shrink a little bit in each direction, just to get the, again, those units to be a little bit more typical. And then, you know, have the connection piece back into the house, and then the new house would, instead of having, we originally contemplated, I believe, garage spaces for the White House under kind of the barn, that would now be added to the exterior of the White House as it is today. So those are the changes. We did have a chance to review the staff report comments. I think really the only one who had any questions was the fire department. I'm not sure I gave them the latest information. There was a hydrant that was installed. I know that was one of their concerns on Osprey Lane, so there is one that's actually fairly close to the building. And we'll continue to work with them, obviously, till they're, till they're satisfied. Other than that, we have no objections with the staff recommendations, or conditions, or anything along that line, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you or the public might have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any questions by the board on this application? All right, hearing done. I will go ahead and open up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? We don't have a big group here, so. Anybody online?
I don't see anybody online raising their hand.
Okay, I will leave it up to the board then. Any more potential questions for the applicant while we're in the hearing? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions from that. I will go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. Seems like a pretty reasonable approach. Doesn't sound like anybody has any major questions. Anybody have any comments while we're in the meeting? Okay, anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, case A23-0172, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, section 190-146D, subject to seven stipulations as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. We have this motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve this case 823-0172, with the seven stipulations as written in the staff report. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up, there was a, on our agenda, there was a review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. I think, Mr. Ballinger, you found that attached to one of the other ones, right?
Yes, actually, to the, to the case we just heard.
Yeah, right, okay. So, have you, anybody, have you had a chance to take a look at that and want to make a motion as to whether there's any cases of regional impact?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that, as a result of the technical review meeting on October 16th, 2023, there are no projects of regional impact.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger. There are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Riley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes.
All right.
We have a referral on our other business. This is a referral from the Board of Aldermen 023-065, amending lane use code regarding fence construction adjacent to the F.E. Everett Turnpike. Scott or Linda?
Actually, Sam is on Zoom.
Oh, Sam.
He has his hand raised.
Okay. Go ahead, Sam.
Good evening. Thank you. So, this is, this ordinance, this proposed ordinance is in respect to the ability to erect fences along the Everett Turnpike. Any residential property that abut the Turnpike have the opportunity to construct fences up to 14 feet tall, the idea being privacy, sound deadening as well. This was a request received by a number of Aldermen who have constituents with properties that abut the Turnpike. Seven feet was chosen as the minimum, and also you'll see in this ordinance that we're allowing in residential districts, seven feet in height for other fences. Seven feet triggers a building permit, and that's why that number was chosen.
Okay. Questions from the board for Sam regarding this referral? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I just have a question. Why it's limited to residential uses? Is the fences for commercial uses covered elsewhere in the ordinances?
That is a good question. I believe that was contemplated, and it was more, we looked at where residential and where commercial uses were, and the primary location of the commercial uses along the Everett that we were concerned about, there are a number of grade issues, which would make, with, with the Everett being higher and the commercial uses being lower. And we also felt that the residential uses would be more sensitive to the noise from the Everett, but certainly something that is worth debate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the referral by the board? Mr. Hudson?
Not so much a question, but I will point out, the part of this is changing, it's allowing fences of seven feet now in all areas, whereas previously it was six. Seven was kind of chosen because it's a cutoff for a building permit limit, so. I just wanted to note that change. I don't necessarily have any issue with it, but it is a change in city ordinance. I mean, as a practical matter, I don't think there's a lot of seven-foot fence materials out there.
Right.
They tend to be six feet, but just wanted to note that.
Yeah, so under the, just to clarify, then, under the current circumstances, if you wanted to build a fence over six feet but under seven feet, you'd need to get, what, zoning approval, but you wouldn't need a building permit?
Correct. That's my understanding. You need zoning variance, is that correct?
Right, anything over six foot in a residential zone would require a variance.
Right, so this just aligns it, so you're not, there's no, none of those in-between scenarios, right?
Okay, all right. Any other discussion on this? Anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the planning board give a favorable recommendation to propose ordinance 023-065 regarding the land use code pertaining to fence construction along the Everett Turnpike and other pertinent changes thereto.
Okay, so we have that motion for the positive referral as stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Riley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Next up, we have a review of some changes being proposed to our bylaws and procedures. Scott, I think you were involved in putting this together. Do you want to just summarize these? I know everybody's had their own copy and has a chance to look at them.
Sure, sure. Basically, we had taken a look at the planning board procedures and looked at areas that we could update and, as well as potentially change, and under the fourth paragraph, the chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and then, underlined here, is, "And the chair shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time." That was one of the potential suggestions. And then we go down to one, two, three, four, five, seventh paragraph, and we eliminate, "One public member will be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during applicant's rebuttal period."
This is with respect to the procedures.
Yeah, the procedures themselves.
Okay, so those are the two proposed changes. Any discussion on those two proposed changes by the board?
Sorry, just, Scott, where is the proposal you mentioned regarding the limitation on time?
It's, I think it was added.
Yeah, it's, it's an add in the, it's in the procedures, I think you're looking at.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah, we were first looking at procedures, sorry. I've been more clear. So, we're in procedures length, so, yeah, and these were suggestions, I think, that I was also looking at, where, you know, when we have big groups, it, you know, it seems reasonable to put some sort of limit on the, on the amount of time. We don't have to do it, the chair doesn't have to, but does give us a little bit more flexibility to get things under control. And then the, the removal of the one public member allowed to respond only to those items brought forth during the applicant rebuttal period has always been kind of a problematic, I feel, procedure, because, I mean, who's to pick the one? And, you know, it, it seems like it's just very arbitrary to me, and it never, in practice, doesn't work very well either.
Yeah, it's just, I agree. It's kind of strange. I mean, it seems to me you just, you take all the public comment, and once you've heard the public comment, you've heard the public comment.
Yeah, yeah, and it'd be kind of getting to do with applicant, frankly, whenever you're in that scenario, so. Anyway, that's my thoughts. Anybody else have any comments? Want to make any questions? No? I think we probably vote on each of these individually.
Sure.
So, anybody want to make a motion regarding these amended procedures? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the planning board procedures with the amendments as reflected in the version submitted by staff.
All right, so I have a motion to approve these amended procedures by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. All right, so with regard to the bylaws?
Sure.
Scott, there's a couple of changes here, yep.
All right, planning board bylaws. We have the first page, one through 3.5. Don't believe there's any changes on that page.
Right.
There, the next page, under Article 4, election of officers, under 4.1, there's a note added that ex-official members cannot serve as officers.
Yeah.
In terms of.
I think that's been our practice, pretty much, anyway, as far as I've been on the board, but, yeah.
Yeah, that just kind of makes it a little cleaner.
Okay.
And then, under Article 6, under public hearings, section 6.4, under item B, vote shall be taken, and currently it says to make a determination that the application is or is not complete and ready to take jurisdiction. They just simplified that to say, vote shall be taken to determine that the application is or is not complete and ready to take jurisdiction. So, just some grammatical.
Yeah.
Clean up there. And under E, staff is consulted, is crossed out, and consult staff to see if they have anything to add. That would be how E would read.
Okay.
And we continue with that same section, and item I and J, I has been struck, and J, we have hearing testimony will cease, and the board will begin the public meeting, where they will discuss and vote on the plan, not resume the public hearing, but begin the public meeting.
Yeah, public meeting, yeah, okay. So, that's just clarifying wording. And I is basically what we just voted on for the procedures, yep.
Everything else seemed pretty straightforward. Those were the only ones that we had listed.
Okay. All right, any discussion by the board on these amendments to the bylaws? Okay, anybody want to make a motion on these? Mr. Ballinger?
Oh, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the revisions to the Nashua City Planning Board bylaws as, as presented in our packets.
Okay, so we have that motion to accept the amended bylaws as presented, and by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on this by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. All right, next up, we have the meeting dates. So, if anybody just take a look at those.
Yeah, we did, we did go through these initially last meeting, but I suggested that for normal practice, even though it seems relatively straightforward, that we just all take a look at them in between and vote on, vote on them at this meeting.
Yep, okay, so any discussion? I mean, usually what I try to look for is, especially school vacations, they tend to be a problem, so.
We, we looked at, Mr. Chair, we looked at school vacations and 4th of July. I think those, I think those are the biggies, so I think we're in decent shape.
Yeah, it looks like the February slash March, March break is, we're outside of that.
Outside of February, outside of April break.
Outside of April break. Yeah, around the 4th of July, it looks like it's the week after, so that looks September 5th. How does that fall on, is that Labor Day week? I think it's usually.
Yeah, I think that one floats a little bit, Mr. Chair.
Labor Day is September 2nd.
Yeah, so that's before. It's after Labor Day, it's not the, okay. I think we've had a little bit of trouble with it if it's the Thursday before Labor Day, because people try to extend the, the holiday there a little bit. Usually after, it's a little far away, so.
And what, Thanksgiving must be really late.
Yeah, what's, when's Thanksgiving? Is that the last week of?
November 28th.
Okay, so that one's out of the way. Yeah, I don't see any big issues, unless anybody else does. Any questions or concerns? All right, anybody want to make a motion on it? Mr. Riley?
I will make a motion to approve the 2024 scheduled meeting dates.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Riley to approve the 2024 meeting and deadline dates. I, I, actually, do we normally just approve the meeting dates and make sure staff accordingly rechecks the, the other dates?
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, I think the, you know, the deadline dates otherwise are set by, in this case, the notice set by law, so I think.
Yeah, so I, I think we'll just make the motion specific to the meeting date.
Yeah.
Okay, is, is that what you said, anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm trying to clarify, because I know we feel like we've had to adjust a few of those before. All right, so we have a motion to approve the 2024 meeting dates, proposed meeting dates. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Okay. That is the last of our agenda, as written anyway. Does anybody have any discussion items? I think the sidewalk discussion is still pending, right? There's some more research going in on that. Okay. Anything else from staff?
No, that's it.
All right. Mr. Hirsch?
The recusal issue, excuse me, which I didn't expect, should we notify you in advance if we're going to have to recuse ourselves?
It would be helpful. I mean, sometimes you don't know, but, yeah, it would be helpful. Maybe I'll have Kate, when she sends out the email, just say, will you be attending and will you have to recuse yourself from any meetings? That might be helpful, because I.
Sure.
Just in case we have some coming up in the future.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, yep.
Make it part of the whole routine.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All right, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So, moving.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hudson to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. We're adjourned to 7:46.